This conference will now be recorded.
Their actions in our minds are not worthy of them to run that business. And I'll tell you why. When you have a situation where you have a fire, and it takes the fire department to get there and to pull the alarm, that's a major issue in my mind. When they get there, doors are locked. We find one that has heavy gas behind it. They won't show us the rest of the storeroom until we demand to tear open the door. They're not cooperating. Can you give me a history of them before they bought it? What their experience in running a business like this was?
No, Mr. Lehman, the reason for that is so that I received Meritatee's letter. I came here to respond to that. And again, I did not ask my clients to come here because I thought maybe this was going to be more of a of a closed proceeding from standpoint of people being here because of the fire. I would certainly have had them here. And they can answer questions like that. But if, Mr. Lehman, to answer to your question if I can, in Meritatee's letter, it specifically talks about a corrective action plan. So that indicated to me that the issue of what needed to be fixed.
Biggest ones are the three I just listed.
I'm sorry, sir?
The biggest ones are the three I just listed. Lack of cooperation, the lack of concern, the figures making sure that the system is actually running. I understand to this day that alarm system is still fixed.
That's not true. You'll see in the pack that it's being presented.
Could be.
Sir?
Yep.
And we'll tell you, she said, we hired Centos Corporation to come in and put in a new alarm system. I'm contracted with them to do the monitoring. And we'll tell you, we say that they have been out there two days, as I understand it. It's almost done. And that's in the pack, you can see that, sir. My folks have been proacting about this.
I'm going to refer to the chief. We had an discussion just before we came in. Is it active or not?
It's...
I'm asking the chief.
Sure. It's probably helpful for our report recorder, if you need to change your stuff, maybe you are.
My name is Sir, we're a little car chaseers today. And in response to that question, sir, we visited via phone with representatives from Centos this afternoon. We were advised Friday night, email got shot on this room. The lady at the hotel was tagged and wanting to be done today. The whole company, they were looking at alarm systems today. We were advised this afternoon about 3:00, that we could try before they would have the system hopefully operating between some Friday. And they were contacted about possible amount of inspection. And that is the new system. And the other system, we know that March 4, 2020 inspection, is a circuit state. The alarm system is working. This is the brand new system that you put in.
I mean, I'd like to at least go through what the exhibits are that Mr. Spangler and I agreed to. Exhibit number five is the report we just mentioned, the March 4, 2024. Exhibit number six is the letter dated March 17, 2020 from Brittany Kendren from the Department of Health and Senior Services regarding the requirements of the install of the sprinkler system, fire alarm system, and the other smoke detectors that were interconnected. And exhibit number seven is the letter that the mayor sent to the hotel dated April 7, 2020. And the last one is exhibit number A, and this is from Mr. Spangler's office. And it refers to the information he alluded to earlier about the emails from the two sprinkler companies and the insurance. We're going to have Deputy Chief Matt Irwin is going to come around and give copies of those that are here in this room, as well as in the up and the down. I didn't check them out yet, though, so you'll have to see. I'm sorry. Five, six, seven, and A.
And A?
A, and that's for yours.
Do you guys ever get...
Are there any other questions before we proceed with witnesses?
Question, while this is just fresh in my mind, Mr. Lehman's question on the installation of the fire alarm system. And my question is, did the owner of the property go through the permit process to get that installation?
I am not aware that any... We might have some witnesses later here. We can ask that question of. And clarify that, because one will be from the community development department, and one will be from the fire department. All right. Last chance for any questions before we proceed with witnesses.
Karen, I'd have a couple. I have a couple questions, Dan.
Councilman Lowe? Go ahead.
Who is translating these people?
Say that again.
Who is doing the translating for these people?
Translating?
This is giving this information to Mr. Spangler.
Nobody's talking about, there was a, I think we were told that you're talking about it because of a language barrier?
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, they speak... I think Mr. Spangler's meeting with him before I know it, so Dan has. And they speak English sometimes, but they talk a little bit fast. And sometimes it's kind of hard to understand. And so again, I would... If I was talking to them, it would have been a different situation. I do consider...
Charlie, go ahead.
You know, I can't hear Mr. Spangler very well, but I can hear Kelvin really well. My question is, who's doing the translating? Is this person a certified translator of any kind that we can recognize? You know, this is the proper language, proper vernacular, so to speak. I really want to get these people in here and with proper translation.
Mr. Spangler has represented, I'm sorry you couldn't hear that, but he has represented that they speak English and that they are not using a translator. Is that accurate?
That is true, sir.
If we have such a language barrier, I would almost be willing to say I'd want to have somebody that's certified to translate that. So everybody's thinking off the same sheet of music.
May perhaps I can clarify this for everyone here. When I first talked with Mr. Spangler about this hearing and we're talking about who was going to be able to appear, he advised that he didn't think his clients would appear. Not because there's a language barrier, there was a language in being able to understand them and, as he said, his client, a lot of them particularly, to talk very fast and make it difficult. They are not here present in the council chambers. So they are not here to have any translation be done in the first instance.
Well, I mean, who is translating for Mr. Spangler?
I didn't understand the question.
Was your question, who is translating for Mr. Spangler?
That's correct.
Okay, I believe he's communicating with his clients without a translator.
Well, if we have a language barrier, I think we need some kind of a certified translator. I'm not comfortable voting one way or the other unless these people know exactly what's going on. Again, nothing against Mr. Spangler, but do they understand to the letter of what's going to happen? Do they understand to the letter in their own language how this is all going to transpire?
Charlie, can you hear me? This is Jeff.
I do.
Mr. Spangler has stated that they are fluent enough in English to be able to do what needs to be done. So I think we're okay with an outside translator.
And I would, I guess I can live with that, that it makes me a little uneasy about, you know, if they don't understand and we don't understand, that leaves that language barrier. Again, I don't know what Mr. Spangler's qualifications are for translating even in both in English.
And would it be possible that Mr. Spangler could verify or, what do I want to say? He will be able to relay all, they cannot use the language barrier for not understanding what we're trying to accomplish here? Does that make sense?
Yes, dear sir. For the record, if there is a concern that my clients are going to come back and say, "We shouldn't have been here," or whatever, "we didn't get to speak," that's not, they should not appear for that reason to say that you had something, you should go to court and explain that. My, they communicate fine with me. I did not have them here for, number one, because of the COVID issue, I didn't know. I thought this probably needs to be more of a closed proceeding. These people communicate wrong, and that would be for them to speak.
This was posted as a public proceeding?
No, I understand. I was talking to Ann, and she told me...
I don't understand why there's confusion about public, closed proceedings. This was posted as a public...
I'm not...
Why are you confused?
Sir?
Why are you confused about that?
Oh, okay, very odd. When we talked about this, I had sent her emails last week. And I'm asking, I said, you know, here's the information, here's where we're coming from. Do you think it would be helpful if I came to this meeting? And she said, yes, I think it would be helpful to be here. But she told me. She said, and she gave me her cell phone number. I had a funny post-it note in my file. And she said, and she verified this. She said, "The door is going to be locked, and you may have to call my cell to get in here." She was telling you that's true. So, I mean, that's my point on this, sir, is I'm not saying it wasn't a public hearing or posted a public hearing. I'm just saying that I thought it was going to be because of the virus situation, the way that my posts communicate that it would be better if the highest period were...
Mr. Claus, have a question?
I would like to say something.
Thank you, please. Yes, sir. You were told that they were grandfathered in, but then the state said that you're not. So what you pushed in, you come to...
Well, I haven't spoken with the lady from the state with reference to the March 17 letter, but my reading of the letter says, my interpretation of what she's saying is that as long as the hotel is compliant with COVID codes, it's okay. Except you have this fire, which now requires a major renovation. Since it requires a minimum of eight renovations, now, not prior to COVID, now you...
What did you come to, this is it?
Well, what we've done, sir, is, and you'll see in the pack, is I contracted two different companies to come in and hit the bid and get some information about that. And we're going to have to go from there to see, and I want to have a test of state position on this report. We're nervous. We just want to probably get compliance and get a plan together that is workable. All right, thanks, sir. You're welcome.
This is Tom. I'd like to state one thing.
This is Tom Odom.
We've addressed the issue that there's not a translation difficulty. We've also addressed that this is a public hearing, and they were more than able to come to this meeting. But I'd also like to put on statement that they are not on the phone conference as well on a video conference as well. They did not make that, am I correct in that, Kelvin? Or can somebody verify that they are not on the phone nor on video conference for this meeting?
There is a couple of callers that I do not know who they are. So they could be or could not be. I do not know.
Mr. Spangler, can you address that issue? Are they on the phone or on video conference for this meeting?
I don't believe so, sir.
You don't believe so?
I don't know the answer to your question.
Oh, you don't know the answer? Okay. All right, thank you.
Our first witness will be Michelle Scott. Michelle, you've been informed by this report. Could you please, please, we're going to share a microphone. So if we cut out, somebody say something that's located elsewhere. Miss Scott, would you say your full name and your position with City Civil?
Sheldon Scott, I'm an accounting technician.
And it's one of your duties that is, you're located with the financial department?
Yes.
And it's one of your duties, your job to issue and renew city licenses, all sorts of them?
Yes.
And that my request is you pull the current business licenses, like Conology, Truman, and Sweet?
Yes.
Has that been marked as City Exhibit Number One?
Yes.
Is this a copy of what is in your office?
And it was applied for and purposed on May 16, 2019? And it was expired on May 31 of this year? Yes.
How about everybody else? Okay, none is very clear.
I couldn't understand.
Me neither.
I'm here, but I couldn't understand what they just said.
Well, basically, for those, City Exhibit One has been admitted. It is a copy of the Truman Inn business license with the City Civilia. That's been, now been stipulated to between Mr. Spangler and myself. So we would ask that that be admitted in here.
Oh, okay.
Please admit. Yes, we're going to admit that.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Somebody else has a question.
Do you have a question?
I have a question for Michelle.
Uh, I... So we're going to ask that Miss Scott be interviewed. Thank you very much. And next witness the city has is Mr. Neil Harmon.
Speaking now, John.
That's Tess. Tess.
You know, you can have a seat. Ashley, state your full name and your position with City Civil?
Neil Harmon, building inspector.
And what are your duties as a building inspector?
I inspect new construction, remodels, rebuilds, and use that kind of stuff. Demolition.
I'm going to hand you what's been marked as City Exhibit Number Four and ask if you can identify that.
This is a building permit for commercial demo cleanup and removal of all fire damage. No reconstruction can be done on this permit.
Is that a permit that was applied for as a result of the... Turning in afterwards?
Yes.
And why by one of their contractors?
Yes.
And what was the name of the contractor?
Dmitri Garni.
And did you do a final inspection on this permit?
I did.
And you do that today?
I did that, sir.
And are there any additional steps that the Conology needs to take to close out this demolition permit?
This permit has been closed and filed.
Is City Exhibit Number 11 kind of a, we call it here, spring book? That it's an exhibit that shows that that permit's been closed out?
Yes.
When you went out there today, did you observe that there was, had any reconstruction in the fire damage area?
There was, oh, we were the government, done at the time.
Did I also ask you to ascertain if there are anyone on the Conology's behalf or those themselves have requested a building permit that's still current?
They do not have the current building permits.
I know that City Exhibit Four and 11 be admitted?
I know.
So do you have any...
I have no other questions for Mr. Harmon, if you need to...
I do. Mr. Harmon, when you were out there, did you ask the owners about getting a permit to do construction? They had to accept the permit, right?
I did inform them they were going to have a different permit. These plans, these new plans of progress, I don't know. They said they were in the process, it was drawn up.
Were you aware of the fact that they had ongoing problems with their insurance company for payment damage?
Until I read some emails and...
All right, so you were pretty to that email, but then since then, did you turn to the documentation that I gave for indicating that you had problems about going to be doing the construction here, correct?
Yes.
That's all, sir. Thank you very much.
Question?
Yes, sir.
This permit for the demolition? What was the timeframe? Was demolition already started before it was actually asked for?
I think they had started removing some of the burnout stuff.
Correct.
And we stopped them and told Dmitri, you need to actually come in and get a permit for the demo.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our man counsel?
I would like a question. On this process of the rebuilding of this facility, it indicated they need to get a qualified blueprints for, they'd be certified by the Sec App of your office, Neil, is that correct?
They need to have engineered plans on what they're doing. And we will review it, they have to find any changes. Fire department will review it. And there won't be any public works because it's a existing building.
Was that, was that true?
If there's any questions, we'll send it back to them, have it directed. And then once it's, everything's correct, they'll approve it, and they can get started.
Was that clearly stated to the owner at that time?
They understand that, yes. They need to get the engineered plans.
So that timeframe is, give me a timeframe on that. When did they...
I have no idea. They said it's with the architect now, so...
I mean, part of that. When did they get that notification?
Hmm, I don't know for sure. I know, I talked to them today about it, and they said it was in the works.
Wouldn't it have been stated at the time that the demolition permit was issued?
Yeah, well, more than likely because it says no construction on this permit. So the general contractor is who I really talked to. And he knew that he would have to come and get another permit before they were allowed to reconstruct.
And would you say it was also included in the state letter?
I don't recall it again, but it probably was, I can't say for sure.
So Neil, when you were there today, you observed the new alarm?
I did not observe it. I saw that the company was there and they were installed.
So were you aware today to acquire a permit for that installation?
I was under the understanding that it was a repair. I didn't understand that it was a brand new system. It's a brand new system, then they didn't get a permit to continue with that.
In your observation, was it a new system?
I just saw that the company was there and a couple of workers. I didn't, I was there to look at the demo and had to go on that. I didn't really check out the fire system or the alarm system.
Mr. Spangler said it was a new system today.
Any other questions for Mr. Harmon? If you can make a few cents, thank you. Our next witness is Captain Shaw. Could you state your name and position with City Civil?
My name is Daniel Shaw. I'm captain with the City Department.
And what do you, some of your duties include fire inspections associated with commercial...
Yes.
What other duties do you do?
Essentially, I oversee our fire prevention and training.
Oh, is that also fair to say that you're over the other fire inspection?
That's correct.
All right. I'm going to hand you what's been marked as City Exhibit Number Two and ask if you can identify that.
This is the annual inspection dated 7/11/2018 that we completed on the Conology...
And was that done by you?
Myself and Inspector Paul.
All right. And in that report, is it fair to say there are a multitude of items that the Conology passed on, but also there was a several violations?
And, and, you know, I have a question for you too. This, ladies and gentlemen, this report deals with inspection back in July of 2018, which I don't understand and I voiced it to. And I don't understand the relevance of the inspection in 2018. I think, again, maybe the tissue stipulated whatever fail orders were found on that report were written. The most recent inspection was on Friday, this year, which is where we are at today, not in 2018. So I don't understand what the relevance is as to the inspection done in July of 2018. A situation when all of these efficiencies were taken care of.
Thank you. I hadn't quite gotten to that point yet. So would you stipulate exhibit number two, three, eight, and nine?
Well, two is the one I just posted, 2018.
Okay.
So what were your...
Well, number three is, the fire inspection report dated January 24th, 2018.
I have no objection to that.
Number eight is one that you and I talked about. It was about just a complaint on that. I brought them just in case we got into that.
This was one from, like you remember, in 2019. One of the, one of the... The report did. So, yeah, this is relevant to what we're talking about. So I don't stipulate to that.
Okay. How about Exhibit Number Nine is the contact sheet? And I don't, I'll just, I hope I have early to you like the color version of that.
I did not, but are the issues...
Apart from the firearms, I'll verify that.
I do, that's a good question.
So now that we've got a stipulation on exhibit two, three, and nine, we can...
Well, I don't stipulate to number two.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. I have some more work for someone. We're going to be sending around exhibit number three and number nine, and we'll get to those in a moment. So, Mr. Shaw, did the mayor's letter, I mean, you can pretty easy see that as well. That is Exhibit Number Seven for those of you that are keeping track on your copies you have in hand. That identifies some concerns that were raised from the 2018 report. Is that everything?
That is correct.
And the concerns were about whether the alarm system was not operational and other issues such as e-brass, exit, emergency lighting, fire extinguisher, smoke detectors, and fire doors.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, at the conclusion of your report, there was the three step correction plan. Is that true?
That is correct.
And there were certain things they had to do first fairly quickly. You were there on July 11th. There were things that needed to be done in a couple of days, that. And what, what did they have to fix?
There was a tiered completion together based off of the most significant life threat moving through a lesser of them.
What did you have to have done by...
Those are the things that I'm trying to... In the back of my mind, it's actually important. I guess we can read it through a different level. So again, I mean, we do not stipulate that any deficiencies that I would grab a problem.
I'm just going to ask him that first, any questions?
Okay. Maybe we can get around to that.
Okay. Captain Shaw, did ultimately Truman Lodge comply with all these positions?
That is accurate.
Okay. And when did they complete them in a timely fashion, step forward in the report?
So as far as the tier that the inspection went, the very first one was a very... That was primarily focused on the alarm system. They were not able to achieve that. However, they were able to get somebody who was able to contact us through that company to achieve compliance and everything. As far as everything being accomplished... In front of me, I don't have it. If you want me to look up the exact date, but in order to achieve compliance, we're looking.
But it was done approximately in the same timeframe between around August or perhaps it went into September?
I believe that it was in September.
Okay. So Captain Shaw, was they were able to follow through with the corrective action plan?
That is accurate.
I guess that city exhibit number two be admitted. And Mr. Spangler's objection to that.
Why not? This gentleman's test only... I do not have an objection.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So submitted. We'll send that one around too. Please, Captain Shaw, I actually said although we have a stipulation about the fire incident report, I wanted to have you testify as to your observations while you were on the ground by. Were you on duty that particular day?
I was.
Okay. And what did you observe when you arrived on?
So as I arrived, I noticed a very similar what was written in the interim report of heavy smoke showing through a couple of windows on the outside of the front, alcohol will be the front for us. I had at least one apparatus on the scene prior to my arrival. It already started to incinerate. Let me get into what happened at this point or just my observations as I...
I'm fine with your observations, but my question, I made a question. What did you do when you arrived on?
So I put my ear on, went inside, saw that smoke was coming out of the east wing and noticed that the fire doors were not closed. At that point, I came to the recollection that the alarm system was not sounding, so I pulled the manual pull station, activated the alarm system, applied the oxygen to evacuate, but also closed the fire doors and prevented extension into other areas.
And had... So does it just take one pull station, one of the pull stations to activate that and touch it?
That is accurate. Any pull station will activate the entire system.
And nobody had done that prior to your arrival?
That is correct.
No one from either the general public staying there or from the hotel?
That is correct.
Had the hotel, anybody start the evacuation of the hotel?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So did you participate in that?
I did.
What did you do?
We actually... I didn't obtain it, but we got somewhat of a bit of information of what rooms were occupied. We obtained a master key or a key card that is supposed to let you in all of the rooms. However, we're stating this for what rooms it works on. This is one of the things that I noticed on. I know we're getting to that point, but any of the inspections that we go on, we just randomly select rooms. We try to follow a ten percent rule and it's kind of a fifty-fifty as far as the key card lets you into that room or they have a master key that lets you into those rooms as well. So the master key or card that we speak from them did not let us into all of the rooms that we needed to attempt to evacuate.
Were you able to ascertain whether or not any guests had already evacuated the hotel?
I don't know that I can speak on that at all.
From the list that you provided, was there anybody still remaining in the room?
There were still, after I pulled the alarm system and going around, wasn't just myself seeking the evacuation. There were still people evacuating as we were knocking on doors and open doors.
Is it a fire code violation if no one from the hotel particularly that worked there had not pulled the firearm?
So one of the chapter four of the international fire code, which we follow through the 2015 edition, chapter four talks about emergency preparedness, which goes into not just what they are supposed to do in the event, when we call out if there's an alarm system, they are supposed to activate that, notifying the fire department. They're also monthly or don't quote... There's a table within there that tells them how often they're supposed to perform evacuation drills. It also talks about employee training and those types of things in chapter four.
The mayor's letter also mentions that one of the doorways had been blocked from the inside by a large metal cabinet. Would that qualify as a...
So international fire code states that you are not allowed to block immediate egress. The difficult thing with this is they have provided a private residence within the hotel. One of the doors that lead out of that room was blocked with metal cabinets. In my interpretation, yes, that would be an international fire code violation. They were always considered as a private residence and not allowed into those areas as privacy kind of supersedes the code inspections. But yeah, it did take a little money there, but...
How about the two separate LP techs that were behind locked doors in the hotel? That is a fire code violation.
So yeah, even in a merchant of space, you will see the outside of a place and you will find that says please unregularly stand. So there is a minimum or maximum quantity and size of containers that you will see in... If you can go in and buy the one pound of open cylinders, but you're not allowed to have anything larger than that within the facility. Then we start talking about a residential space could become the instructor in that quantity. So yes, it would be a fire code violation to have a twenty-pound open cylinder.
I'm next going to turn you to the March fourth fire report that we have marked.
One of these.
Yeah. Mark is exhibit number five, if you're following along. So this shows, we've already... Mr. Spangler and I have already stipulated to the admission of this particular, as well as the incident from the fire. Then going through, you had testified earlier about the need to have kind of a fire evacuation plan. Is that one of the things you noted or Mr. Sorry, Fire Inspector Wolf noted in his inspection on the fourth that they needed to be prepared for?
So during your inspection, I actually provided them with the portions of chapter four that they needed to investigate and comply with. Within our inspector notes, I state that we provide information on chapter four, emergency preparedness. Please put together a plan, provide employee training, inform fire doors that are required, have documentation prepared, leave items upon our own terms. So I asked them if those records existed. The answer to that is no. There was some alluding to large day records and those types of things. Can I say whether that is accurate or not? But they were not able to provide me at the time of this inspection anything that showed they were compliant.
Mr. Spangler stated that you were scheduled to come back and I think your report indicates back on April third. Is there... What's the reason you all not been able to go back and make a reinspection?
Specifically, we return on Thursday. We allow thirty days to achieve compliance. That would put us in, as you stated, the beginning of April. I don't know whether it became our critical time to go back to the team. So we typically cut down all inspections or annual inspections or any inspections that we're currently doing or trying to keep some of those projects going along. But we have not done any reinspection since the COVID eighteen, so.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have for Captain Shaw. Do you have any?
Yes, I do. Captain, you were talking about the international fire code chapter four.
That's correct.
And is the city of Soudia... We have adopted almost an entirely...
Person. Rules or... Complicated, I guess is probably a better word for that.
The city of Soudia has adopted...
What I am trying to say is there are portions of the 2013 international fire code that have been modified or not for clarification. Technically, in single-family dwelling, it's required to have a surface. That is one of the things that we have modified to not require.
Okay. You mentioned, if I understood correctly, this evacuation, written evacuation plan. Is that what you said?
I don't know that I use those words, but I'd like to see where you're going here.
Well, I bet. Let's try this. The... Is there a provision in the international fire code chapter four that this is occupied the city of Soudia that requires some type of a written evacuation or training plan that you somewhat saw?
Yes.
Okay. When did the city of Soudia adopt it?
I can't attest to a date. The 2015 ISC would have been some time in 2015, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. Exhibit two. Now, this is the inspection that you performed at the hotel on July 11th of 2018, correct?
Yes.
It did show us in this inspection that this permission code was in fact where you cited that we're not having this written plan. I'm in this, or am I not? Okay. So when you were doing this thorough inspection of the hotel in July 2018, did you ask them if they had the written protocol that you're now talking about? It's not present in 2020?
Not to my knowledge.
Right? So then, Captain, would it be fair to say the first time that you ever brought that to their attention was on March fourth of this year?
Me personally, yes.
Do you know of anybody else over the other inspector, fire official, prior to March fourth of 2020 that brought this to their attention?
Anybody from our office? No.
Right. So this is something new.
I would say that's a false statement.
Right. Why would that be false?
I will never claim to be perfect. This is an item that obviously we missed on our 2018 inspection, but I also believe that it is important to note that if I believe that the business owner or also your responsibility to manage and to comply as well. So as a business owner, you should understand what the fire do and you should be achieving that.
What you told us earlier, there's even some differences of opinion as to what the code requires, right? You're a professional in this field, right?
There is, like many documents, there is interpretation that comes into play and the code specifically called out that the interpretation of the...
So, and as for 2018, the things that you tell them that they may be...
Not your taking.
So on March fourth of this year, did you have any part in this?
I did.
Did you have them back out there soon and obviously because of the fire and things?
Correct. Due to the reasons that I've already stated, yes.
Okay. Now, when you and Mr. Wolf did this inspection on March fourth of this year after this fire, I assume that you wanted to do a comprehensive inspection.
I believe that's the goal of every inspection.
Sure, we want to do a good job, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. These are people that you just cited before. They had a fire. They're out there acting fire. And so you want to do a good job of that inspection, right?
You'll get prevent any other facilities, yes?
Right. I mean, you always want to do a thorough job, like you wanted to do a thorough job back in July, I think.
Correct.
All right. And there seems to be time spent, I've read somewhere, one hundred and thirty-three minutes. That's two hours and thirteen minutes of inspection. It's on the last page. Would you disagree with that?
Were you looking at 2018 or 2020?
Twenty twenty.
It did show a total time of one thirty-three minutes.
So that would be two hours and fifteen minutes.
I became a fireman.
Okay. I wasn't military.
I can tell you that on the front page, the time is of oh eight thirty-two, timeout of ten four five.
Okay. So the things that are in this report exhibit by March fourth, 2020, these are things that you have fixed, correct?
Correct.
Now, you mentioned, I'm not going to clear about it. You mentioned that on the day of the fire, something about key card or master key for rooms. Is this a physical metal key or is it a swipe card for rooms? What are you talking about?
Technically, both. The item that was at the day was a key card, like you would see as the hook up.
Okay. Now, does that suit what you said on the day of the fire that what you were given opened the doors, but not all of the rooms?
That is correct.
Okay. When you... Did I understand correctly, when, for example, July 2018, you did your report, did you do some kind of inspection of this master key? Is that part of the regular inspection?
Not exactly sure where you're going here, but there isn't anything that says one particular key has to give me ever. I think the point of the testimony is that the item given to us to... I think the, the point of the testimony is that the item given to us to initiate evacuation, we're not sufficient.
Okay, that wasn't my question, but I appreciate that, so I'll see if I can clear it up. When you did your thorough inspection in July of 2018, was that one thing that you checked? Did you ask them, give me a master key so I can check? Because I'd like to say that you did do that, and it's kind of like you just had various rooms. Did I misunderstand that?
Still don't understand the question.
In 2018, did you check the so-called master key on any rooms?
So as a part of our inspection, we have the owner's agent accompany us. So when we tell them that we need to get in room 102, they open the door. If the question is, was I concerned at that point that one item didn't get me ever? Is that the question?
Well, the question is, was that part of your inspection? Yes, yes or no, is that part of the regular inspection? You take, you check rooms, is that part of it or not?
They just have to give me access to every, every space. So I don't expect that master card to get me into, I don't expect for that same card. In a newer facility, that would be a case, but in this facility, that master card gets me into a certain place, and a physical key gets me other places.
Okay. But let's just talk about, when you were out there, would you just say, the owner or the owner's representative, I don't want to be able to get in room 201? And then they have to be able to take you down there and meet you in room 201?
Is that clear?
That's, that's part of the inspection, right? Because if they can't get you into room 201, they're going to write them up for that, aren't you? I mean, you make it sound like, you know, with the fire, so I assume it's something that would be part of the regular inspection process.
And could I address something?
No, could you still let him, if he can understand the question?
What I understand of the question is, and what you just alluded to, is that that key card wasn't allowing me to evacuate all outdoors, and that should have been a concern of mine on 2018 inspection.
Okay, and so?
But let me address that. The key card and key that we're talking about at that point were on the same key ring. The key ring that I got for evacuation was not the same one that they gave or that they carried around to get me everywhere. So they had the ability, when they were present, to allow me into all outside spaces. However, what was provided to me in the evacuation time was not sufficient in allowing me to evacuate all outdoors.
Because the, the metal, physical key was separated from the key card?
Correct.
Okay, so that's what the issue is. They handle them, but they work together. That's the issue?
So the way that I would look at it is, as a part of their emergency preparedness, they would have something for us to aid in evacuation. So apparently, they have something that they carry with them all the time to allow them access to the room. And when we do our inspection and they're with us, that's no longer a problem. However, during the evacuation, they provided something different, which did not allow us to evacuation at all.
So they either give you a physical key, or they give you a key card, they work together, is that what I'm hearing?
Is that clear?
What you wanted was to have the, the physical key and the key cards together.
What I wanted was to be able to access all rooms.
There's, yeah, if you're going to access them all, because they work together.
That's correct.
Okay, that's a small, okay. But there wasn't anything in your 2018 report about problems with that, correct?
There wasn't a problem at that time, because they were together.
On the, the day of the fire, you mentioned the smoke was on the top floor of the building, come on, we go on the top floor, what I call the second floor.
Seeing it from the front, yes, it would be second floor.
Okay, east wing?
Is that clear?
Okay. And, and guests were in the west wing?
Yes, we're in all parts of the facility, in my knowledge.
You know that specifically?
Uh, it's my understanding.
Well, I'm not misunderstanding. You witnessed, not with somebody else, but with me. Did, did you evacuate the person, somebody from the east wing?
I don't believe I can answer that out of synapse.
Okay, revision. That's all, thanks.
I do have, I should have covered this already, so I'm gonna go back to him. This is on Miss Kindred's letter, I do. And then this letter, looking at the same thing, it's city civet number six. This is a letter, a certificate that came from a Brittany Kindred with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, Dr. T., on a log dated March 17th of 2020. And my question to you, Captain Shaw, is, in, in fire language, what is the state of Missouri requiring this hotel to do?
Well, I think I do have a objection that the code states itself, I don't think it needs fire language, I think you agree. You want to ask him this for his interpretation, that's not a problem.
I'm asking for his interpretation.
Do you have a specific part, please?
I want to know what paragraph number 123 you talked about that starts being in compliance.
Starts being in compliance. So that's a specific paragraph, the compliance of national codes. They supervise automatic sprinkler system, automatic sprinkler system, and the sprinkler system that, in the older facility, that has a frangible bolted in it that when it reaches a certain temperature, it allows water to flow through that head. Supervise, it is alluding to the fact that it's tied to the alarm system, so that there are supervisory hours that when, if you go in and try to turn off the water flow to the sprinkler system, maybe an alarm or a trouble within the system. So that's what we're talking about, a supervised automatic sprinkler system. A fire alarm system with all the sensors and distancing devices interconnected. Essentially, what that is saying is, the current, and even after the upgrade, based on my emails and conversations spent on it, the alarm system does not have any sentencing for smoke activation devices, so that the alarm would go off on it. The only way for this alarm to go off is as I did in a fire event. So the interconnected is saying that it's tied back to the alarm system, and they're interconnected between the two alarms.
Oh, this particular hotel does not have an automatic supervisor?
That is correct, in those sprinklers systems.
And so therefore, for, for them to comply with this, they're gonna have to make a substantial renovation to their hotel. Is that fair?
I guess it depends on what you say, renovation. If it's an entire new sprinkler system, it means that they will have to run by some ceilings, drop heads down through all of the ceilings. Yes, it's a major job.
And that'd be done throughout their entire hotel?
That is my understanding of, of the state regulations.
And that would require, before that's done, would that require a sort of permitting process that occurs through your office or your burden to the fire department?
Technically, all of our permits go through building and code, so they would issue the permit, but it would require engineers to plan for this sprinkler system itself. The alarm system would be the same way, it would get a brand new alarm system, it would require an engineer's drawings as well, but the permitting would technically go through the building.
The last thing I need to ask you about is the, the email that Mr. Stangler, for those following that, is city, it's not a city civet, it's Mr. Stangler's civet, mark it's A. So let's start with the SINTO information. You've had some conversations, obviously, with someone from SINTO. Do you recall his name?
I don't know, his name was, last name, I don't remember who it is here, but his first name was Mike, and he was the service manager for the fire protection.
Okay. And what is it that is your understanding that they have installed or under the property?
So the information that, I don't remember if it came from the hotel, or if it came from you, but I got a notification, oh, it was, it was from the email that you received from the other party that talked about the work that SINTO was doing. And what, I guess alarmed me and caused me to, to reach out to them, was they have a quote here, and they're talking about the scope of work they're doing, and one of my concerns was that the way that it's written to the owner is that if they accomplish the scope of work, they would meet minimum NFPA requirement, and that is a false statement. And I wanted to clarify that with SINTO, see exactly what they accomplished, and I also wanted to know if the correspondence between myself and the owners, we were notified that the alarm system was up to date, it was tagged and ready to go, and I wanted to know why this SINTO or this company had not called for a final inspection, so that we could see that what that was proposing. I also wanted to know why they were installing a new system without any permits planned here, or any of those things that were normal to happen. So the scope of work was a new fire alarm control panel and replacing seven horns and stroke notification devices. The main purpose through my conversation with them of replacing the box for the fire alarm control panel was because the old alarm control panel was not able to be monitored without modification, and the modification, the dollars spent, the better spent, have created new panels, so that they could accomplish those goals, and, and have a updated fire alarm control panel. The purpose of replacing the seven horn strokes was due to the fact that the current horns only were not compatible with the new fire alarm control panel, so they had to replace those as well. Thanks for that question. Relate the line.
More than the, I want to draw your attention to, I, I think it's on page one, for all of those of us that have it in front of us, and it's down at the, the bottom, so it would probably be the, in the to whom it makes certain part. So the last sentence talks about simply by monitoring this panel, repair slash replace the busy device with no new code requirements met other than, so what, what should that tell us as a layperson? What does that mean?
So again, going back to that conversation, and me reading it, and feeling like it was misleading what was intended, and they agreed with that, but that I wanted them to make sure that they contact the fire client, and they've been aware that this was not meeting new codes that they probably want to achieve the monitoring. So what this is saying is that by adding the ability to monitor this system on site, they have achieved a portion of the code that requires it to monitor. However, that no new code requirements met other than monitoring, so NFPA 72, NFPA that is set forth for fire alarms, and what they're trying to say here is that just because they upgraded that fire alarm control panel, upgraded the horn strokes, they are still not achieving NFPA 72 standards.
So when you talk later, following on to the next page, that they just perform, provide the additional upgrade that the request of customer, that's really what we're talking about. Is once they know that there's additional work, they want SINTO to do that, they would be happy to comply with that. Is that fair statement?
Yes.
That's all, actually, all the questions I have, Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Shaw, again, Shaw, that's saying, because Ms. Garber really agreed with you in the record, the last sentence. It says, "We will provide the additional upgrade requests of the customer, insurance company, or A H J, authority having jurisdiction." You see that?
I do.
You are the authority having jurisdiction, right?
Technically, no, that's a question.
Well, the Soudia fire committee, okay?
Yes, considering fire committee?
So, so this is saying the fire committee requests from the position with the customer. Then you got a letter, nobody has left a note.
I believe the state's done that.
The state?
Correct.
Okay. What specific letter did the state ever provide the city specifics about what we have to have?
I believe the letter that we talked about a few moments ago, related to an automatic, supervised automatic alarm system, sprinkler system, and a fire alarm.
No, I understand that, that letter. So, but what you're saying is, change the name to the firearm system, correct, from what was at the time of the fire, right?
That's an accurate statement.
At the time of the fire, the sprinkler system was not required, true?
I can only talk about our code?
Well, by now, it's talking about your code, because if, if there was been a sprinkler system required in 2018, you would have shown them that, right? If it was required, true?
If a sprinkler system was required by our code, then yes, it would have been noted on the report.
Well, you could have shown them that. That would be significant, right?
Depending on if they comply.
But you didn't, you didn't tell them, including, that they needed a sprinkler system because it was not required by the code, true?
By what code that directs.
All right. So at the time of the fire, they weren't required to have a sprinkler system, and their alarm system was in compliance, so you could have shown them that too, right?
I think there's more that goes into that, but that's accurate.
Oh, let me ask you one question. If you had been out there a month before the fire, and you looked around, and they had any kind of fire alarm on the system, you'd show them that, wouldn't you?
Show it out. So again, one of the things that has to be noted is, our code is not retroactive. So the code under which it was built, and again, there's a lot that goes into this that I don't know that, without having a code in front of me and being able to quote it, I can speak real eloquence intelligently on it. However, what was built that this year, under this code, what was still hold into? So the code under which they were built? So the code under which they were built, which is why the alarm system that is currently in the facility would not meet today's code, hopefully. However, when it was built, it met the codes that were in place at that point. So we are holding them to those standards because our code is not retroactive.
And the letter you issued from the state states that, "Offspring, this is a record. At the time of the inspection, in this fourth year, July 2018 inspection, the city fire department signed a compliance with local ordinances that excuses its items. However, since the fire damage, the majority of the heat swing, and the facility is now considered under a quote major renovation, unquote, the facility must comply with the law and code against its entire unit and will be held to that standard." You see that?
Yes.
Mr. Spangler, I don't believe that statement is referring to that July 18 inspection. This is their inspection that they're doing, that's what they're referring to, and the new construction that was coming after the fire.
I agree, sir, I understand that. I thought it was, we were talking about two in July. I agree. That was a thing we put on. All right. So, I guess what you're saying is now we've got this sprinkler system, and it has to be tied in with an alarm system, with work that hasn't been completed as of yet, right? In other words, there hasn't been a change in the firearms system from what existed at the time of the fire. But when it's, it has to be coordinated with the new sprinkler system, right? It's part of the same thing to upgrade to the current code.
Sorry, I'm a long-winded, you grab, look at that.
Okay. That's not the first time. What I'm asking is, under the current code, does it have to have a sprinkler system?
Which code are we speaking?
Pick one, pick whatever you want, whatever part of the city's code. Does it have to have a sprinkler system? That's the code here.
For the city of Souda, under the 2015 IFC, the answer is no. However, there is a separate governing body, the Division of Health and Safety Services in the state of Michigan, their code is requiring this new two major renovations.
All right, so the city of Souda doesn't require the state, what were you saying?
I believe that's an active statement.
Yeah, it's funny. This is kind of new to me, so I'm trying to figure it out. So if you can, jokingly, say the required with the sprinkler system, you read the part about a fire alarm system in all smoke detectors and heat sensing devices shall be interconnected. Is that something that part of, is that a part of Souda now? The fire alarm system in all smoke detectors and or heat sensing devices shall be interconnected. Is that required by the city?
Again, we're holding into the code under which they were built, so that not a city requirement, and going back to the state law.
So it's, at the end of the day, you're saying that this building needs to comply with what the state says it needs to comply with. If it complies with the state, it complies here.
I believe that's the blank of the statement.
Okay. Can you clarify that, of course? Take the blank out, put it up.
I believe that there's two governing bodies, and they have to be in compliance with both.
Okay, well, so that's my question. So I'll try to read. If this building is equipped, rebuilt, according to what the state said, since March 17, 2020, is there anything the city is required in addition to that?
I don't believe I can answer that question 100%.
And you would do no answer to that?
Well, without, so the process of understanding whether or even compliance is, when they submit engineered plans, we go through the plan reprocess. And when they have submitted all of that, we're able to go through our plan reprocess, I can speak to that 100%. But in a general statement, I don't believe that we're going to have any standard higher than today.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, the mayor's letter, he's asked about a corrective action plan. And the reason you're here is to ask for an amount of time to put together a corrective action plan. Just needs to know a little bit, parameter, so that plan exists. In other words, what has to be done? You say like five minutes, you know, that question?
Not exactly.
Do you know what a corrective action plan is?
I believe so.
And?
I can't quote the definition of it, but...
Okay. I don't know if there is a definition of it. But if you were on the other side, and somebody said, "You need to do a corrective action," wouldn't you not want to know that we need to do a corrective? Right?
Yeah, I think it's similar to what we did in 2018. We established what needs to be done by this time.
And it did, didn't it?
Correct.
They, they, they did. That's all, thank you.
Captain Shaw, was the same plan that the hotel would have to submit to the city of Souda, engineered plan, plan, believe the same plan they would also have to submit to the Missouri, the San Andreas office, to get their approval?
I would assume so. Again, fully know their
Right.
Plan reprocesses or how. I would assume.
I don't have any other questions for Captain Shaw. Mr. Spangler is not, is anybody from the question?
What were the propane tanks used for?
Andrew, would you repeat your question?
What were the propane tanks used for that were in the rest of the area of the problem?
So, I have not witnessed. I have another code official, I would call them, within this area that has. Apparently...
Well, you know, I think that would get, he just needs to answer the question himself. It's one of them that somebody else told me, that's keep, tell it to this private person.
Well, I can tell you that one of them was found with a we burning action.
If you know, if you know what, did you see somebody else's report? Was this another report or just what somebody told you?
No, this is a conversation.
Is there speculation on your part?
It's, it's hearsay. It's what's called going to the truth of the matter asserted, is what they're used for. You know, whatever, if I told something to Captain Shaw, Mr. Spangler told something, and then you try to say it's what the truth, it should not be allowed. So it is a, it's a valid objection. Any other questions? I have no other witnesses.
I don't, I don't consider that. I think they're already in, just a modest caution. Of course, I'm asking you to answer the question, you can.
I have no objection to the debate. Captain Shaw, please.
So, Ann, from a process standpoint, am I allowed to ask Mr. Spangler a question?
I think if Mr. Spangler would like to entertain questions.
Well, I'll, it's just a question.
Okay. Well, basically, I'm kind of just trying to get the gist of this and trying to understand from your perspective. And your line of questioning, you know, was a lot about when was your client notified, and what was your client notified of, and were they told that they need to comply with this or that law, those kinds of things. So from that, it kind of implies that you or your client believe that the only laws they have to comply with are the ones that we specifically point out that they have to comply with. Is that your assessment, or is that your conclusion?
Mr. Shaw, my response to that is that it's clear in the law, everybody, lack of knowledge about the laws, excuse. I mean, that's, that's not, but on the other hand, we, we as laypeople, we rely on experts to tell us what we need to fix. I can hear these, there is, I bet you there's not a single motel owner or business owner in the city of Souda that knows chapter and boroughs, the international fire code chapter four. I just, there's not. We rely on people. I can give you a personal example. I mean, they come, Mr. Bolt was at my office, my office here about six weeks ago, and he came in, and he just picked a bag, and I've got a light exit sign over one door and one over the other door, he came in, and the light bulb was out on one. And he said, "Well, that's a fail." He says, "Under the code," whichever one he was talking about, "you don't even have to have either one of these. This building is not big enough for that. But if you got them, it must got to be lit. So you got to put a bulb in one, you got to take them both down." And I didn't know that. We took them down. Those are said, "I shouldn't have had my little string heater unplugged, I wasn't using." Okay? So we do rely on that, that we have our facts. The hell is, hey, these are things that you need to fix, and then we fix them, and then when we're told we need to fix them, and we don't, then you suffer the consequences. And I understand that, and that was part of the issue, a week ago, 2018 inspection, that's how things, and they fixed it.
Yes, and that's kind of the follow-up here, is, is, okay, so, so you objected to, you've been talking about 2018, and then you entertained, or you made a lot of questions about what they were told in 2018, and then in the 2020 inspection, there were repeat violations. So then again, it kind of, kind of implies that your client only thinks they have to comply with the law when we point it out, and then when we point out that they haven't, then they fix it, and it's okay. And, and that's, that's what I'm just asking, is that the inference you're trying to lead?
No. The 2018 issue, you made, I can, I raised this again last time, so, talk about 2018. There's a handle, 2018 had to do with this thing on March 4, 2020, where we had an inspection five weeks, six weeks ago. We had a thorough, presumably thorough inspection, and it said, "These are the top, we need to fix." I hope that there was a repeat from 2018.
Well, when they showed up for the fire, the fire doors were also open again. But they, if you go to 2018, if I'm looking correctly, that was part of the write-up, that the fire doors were open and weren't shutting automatically? Is that correct?
Some were blocked open in this picture.
Our doors right next to where the fire was, they were opened again. You know, it's, this whole thing is boiling down to the welfare and the safety of the people that are there. And these people don't seem to have the responsibility or the wherewithal to be able to cover that. Especially when you've got a fire going in the next room, they don't even pull a fire alarm to let anybody know. Something's wrong in this picture. And that's why I asked the original question. What kind of training, what do these people do, other than maybe collect their little money and go on about their business and let this go? Why is it their responsibility? Is someplace along the line, the proprietor, the citizen, whoever, has some type of responsibility? You know, and I sit up here on the council, we're responsible, citizens of this city. The people that come here are guests of this city. The biggest part, in my opinion, and my problem that I have sitting up here tonight, is the welfare and safety of the community. And that's out the window at that place right now. That's the problem we have.
So, it sounds as though you would not be in favor of any kind of corrective action plan, even though that's what the mayor, the mayor asked us and proposed a corrective action plan, which is why we're here, which we have agreed we want?
I would agree that there probably is some type of plan, but it's going to have to have an awful lot of responsibility to prove back to us that they can handle that responsibility and not let it go out the window.
I understand that, sir, and I think your positions will take that. I'd agree with that.
Well, apparently, we do. Tell me why the chief, when they get to the fire, has to threaten her with tearing doors apart to try and get in and find out what's behind the storage area, and now all of a sudden, it turns out we got more gas tanks back in there? What's, you get where I'm going with this?
I understand that you're upset about that, sir. I'm not arguing that.
I'm going to tell you something. If it comes down to it, and we get somebody killed, that's going to be a big problem.
Well...
But we're close.
Well, we're here asking for corrective action plan, whatever this body tells us that we need to do. And we have an objective in that, we have that question. You know, we want to keep, we want to keep this business in business. And so, that's what, but we just need some more time, on the period, short, in my little problems that we've had. So, you know, we're certainly, we're about details that may take care of your concerns in addition to the, that's all. So we just need what we want, just want, and some reasonable period of time to comply.
Mr. Spangler, did your client have a fire evacuation plan on January 27?
I don't want to answer this, sir. I'm not really...
Do you know what those propane tanks were? Do you know what those propane? Ann?
Mrs. Spangler, have you had any chance to talk with the state of Missouri and the San Andreas about what her requirements are and the timeframe to get those in compliance?
Well, what we've done on that, Ann, it's her letter, and what she said needs to be done, and this city, I introduce you from our state. As far as the timing is the sprinklers, there's no doubt about that's going to be, that's the, our engineering, that's required a lot of time in cycles. I told you, it's my mistake, that may be a minimum of three hundred, or less, which is okay, but we just, so I have, in answer to your question, I have not talked to her because we want to get these sprinkler people in. My client's contacted, I think, multiple people, and we have two now, working on that. And I thought we would try to maybe get the sprinkler people in, get their plans, and then I could submit it to her, to say, "Is this what you want? Is that what you want?" I mean, that's what we're trying to do, is we want to get all these things together, and we don't want to leave some detailed hanging. I mean, we want to have something written with some deadlines, that if you don't leave, we don't need that.
Mr. Spangler, since the day of the fire, it probably hasn't been a week go by that we have been in guard for this process. And we have, we have our building officials, our building inspector, the fire department, they've been out on numerous times, communicating, dealing. And now we're going on three months, and we felt we've really gone the extra mile in making this thing so they have an opportunity to cure the problem. And we, quite frankly, have had very, very little communication, not because it's a language barrier, it's because maybe there's some resistance. I don't know. We do, I just want to tell you, we have a public well-being here that we need to respect that. If for some reason in this facility, there is an accident, a death of some kind, I know that every hotel owner, hotel owner, business in Souda, there'll be ramifications. Very difficult. So I know that we have tried on a weekly basis, make sure we're giving them the opportunity to cure this problem.
Well, the mayor, I'll tell you... Well, the mayor, well, I'll tell you, obviously I'm proving that any of those communications are documented about that. But that goes back to the earlier issue, this is a problem from the insurance standpoint, because they're telling my people, you can't do anything out here yet. We're doing our investigation. So we have insurance company number one, who wastes all our time, saying, we may not cover this, but we're not gonna give you an answer, you can't do anything. Until we get an answer, finally, I had to email him before I got an answer, I said, they need to start working on this thing, whether you're gonna cover it or not, we need to know, because they run this understanding into Fire Mart and all this other stuff, we've got a period of time, it's a dead period for us, insurance is saying they'll do it. And we got, we got past that, we got our demolition permit. So, they, they have been working on this, they, they contacted me, and they got the first letter from the insurance company, saying, we don't think we're gonna cover this. So we've been fighting a lot of battles here. I understand, they understand the safety, people think they don't. They, they do, they just wanna get, and then get compliant.
How basic is a fire evacuation plan? I mean, that's, that doesn't cost anything, that is basic, basic. Not having that shows a complete disregard for public safety.
But I'm, sir, I'm not sure they didn't handle it.
They weren't executing it when the fire, the fire arrived on scene?
They pulled it off. Are you gonna base your timeframe on, on what the insurance company's gonna do?
No, but it, no, but it, it's an explanation about, the mayor talking about, them talking to them, I just wanna explain, there was a period of time where...
Are they, are they in, uh, are they committed to be in compliance, for the insurance?
Yes. I mean, they, they understand they're going to have to be. Either they, they're gonna have to be compliant, or they're going to have to shut down. They know that.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at, or are they looking for?
What, we're just trying to figure out, with the city, if we could talk to some of the city people, to give us some ideas. Again, I'm hopeful that we're gonna get a bid from the fire people quickly, maybe this week. This other, this most recent email, it just came in, uh, my client about this other company, we sent them this information. I mean, we wanna get this fast, and we want the fire sprinkler people to come in, give us this fact, and tell us what they're proposing to do. And then at that point, I wanna share that with the city, and I wanna share the lady from the state, and ask them, is this what you want? So then, at that point in time, and then I think we could be on a schedule to have some good days to, to work on this thing.
Okay.
For, for those that haven't been able to drill through all the documentation yet, and, and it's, it's Mark A., and I know it's difficult when we print out the emails, but page three, and the actual number, is, um, gonna be a quote from Ozark Fire for sprinkler system. Um, and that is the email dated, April 29th, and a 2020 address, too. I, I just call it this, because I'm not sure how they're about their last name, that's my life.
Yes, sir.
And then, the very next page, page four, is from a Brian Messenger with a Gotham Fire Protection, um, and it's dated, that he would have a budget proposal by the end of day of this, this Wednesday, April 29th. So I don't, I don't think Ozark has a timeframe on it.
No, but I, I, I agree, they would be fairly reasonable for time. Uh, that's, I mean, that's kind of what I'm thinking, anyway, is, we've got a little time to get, help with these bids, I just wanna make sure, as long as the numbers come out, the system has to be what this city requires and what the state requires. We gotta have...
Well, I, from reading, and I'm just, this is, uh, my observation, okay, is that if the state, they meet the state compliance, we could be pretty close within the city, okay? That being said, in order to go forward, what do you propose to, uh, Shaw, I'm gonna get the bad word fixed, but fix our meeting concerns? In other words, we have no water, we have no sprinkler, we have no alarm system that really is valid, to be honest with you. I mean, you've got a new panel, but the rest of the crap don't work right, according to, according to the standard for notification. So apparently it's still on the manual system, and we have people that will pull the alarm if we have a fire. Tell me why I should give them occupancy permit, in one of those circumstances, right now? How are we gonna fix that to get by those pieces that we don't have in place? And don't tell me that they're gonna, they're gonna do, they'll do it, or work it, because they've proven that they are not gonna do it. So we need that evacuation, we need keys, we need all this to make this work in the meantime.
You have to give me that direction, to tell us exactly what you want, that, that's...
I think we have a lot to make, is what we need.
And just like on the, the firearm system, as it says at the end of the document, what the city requires. So, the work that has been done on the firearms is not adequate, that's another issue where we need, the city folks can have them tell us what extra do we need, because my, I may be, I may be wrong, but it, it sounded to me like when we do the sprinkler system, that's gonna have to be revised again.
Mr. Spangler, I think, when we had our first discussion regarding this, uh, they did come back and get their permit for the demolition. At that time, our building officials and department indicated, the next step is to have a certified architectural rendering of what you're going to be doing. And so far as I know, I don't think it's ever happened. If these other things have come into play, I don't think it's been any determining for any of the sprinkler systems, or... So we, we, I think that we indicate that that's gonna be the process. Number one process is get the permit for demolition. Number two process is get the permit, or get the architectural renders. Pretty simple. I think, uh, over time, Mr. Reston has done some of that for them, uh, and come and get it, prove, document what they're going to do to meet the criteria that the state and city has set up for them. You know, we, we, we have been trying to work this thing out for considerable time, with a lot of resistance.
Well, you, you know, I may be wrong about, I'm not an engineer, but I would assume we can't have an architectural plan until we know what the sprinkler system is. I would assume...
That's the other, that's the other way around. I think it's, the, the architect should be, um, familiar with the code, and I appreciate your, your, uh, talking about the layman, but that's exactly what architects do, is they, they design what needs to take place, how this needs to be done, and then they should design that to the code, all of the codes, not just the sprinkler codes, but design, design the renovations to the code, and then they submit that, and then we, our staff then goes through and reviews, reviews, and determines, yes, this meets the code, or no, it doesn't. If it doesn't, they send it back to the architect, but ultimately it meets the code, we issue a permit, they go build. Um, and, you know, kind of following back up again, you know, kind of, my question to you, it sounds like, again, what you're asking us to do is, is tell us which parts of the code you want us to comply with, and we'll comply with those, but what we really need is, is the architect to design buildings to comply with all codes, the building codes, the fire codes, all of the codes, and then submit that for a plan or...
I'll make that first word, business.
Mr. Spangler, if you were, if you were the proprietor of this business, would it not, at least in your mind, at least it wouldn't mind, safety would be the first thing that people have got to think. This doesn't seem to apply in this particular situation, and that's, I think, the whole question. Just, we're, we're not getting, you know, you're, you know, I have to appreciate the fact, if you try to deflect some of this stuff back on the inspection and, and things that maybe were missed, you know, I can appreciate that. On the other hand, I'm gonna go back, there's a responsibility of that proprietor, there are places they can look these things up, there are places, there are guidelines, the lodging guidelines from the state. It's get by with what we can get by with that. That's the biggest concern, really. And, and, you know, for me to say that I want to give you this license, you're gonna have to answer those things, what happens right now? Do we fix, do we get that thing done? You know, an evacuation plan, keeping track of that, you know, whatever the fire department needs, or health department, whatever they need, needs to fix now, at least as much as we can. Sprinkler system, you know, but I understand it, same with the alarm system. But there are other things that you can do to make those people apart. That's what I'm asking.
I understand.
Do you have any more questions?
I don't have any questions from Mr. Spangler.
I, I guess my question would be, is, is specifically, how much more time are you asking for?
Well, I mean, we've contacted the architect tomorrow. Uh, you know, what the length of time is on that, again, for some people with this coronavirus are kind of hesitant to get out, some people are not. So I don't wanna delay it. Uh, maybe we can, I could touch base with Anne, or you, uh, and maybe you could withhold me from discussing about this for a few days, so we can get you some more information. Uh, I mean, I would work on contacting the architect tomorrow, because that, this has been educational, to me, the process, and where we need to go with this, I'll work with this one tomorrow.
So right now, the fire lodge is in operation. So because of that, of these problems, and, you know, maybe the public house, and we're taking that responsibility, you know, very seriously. I, you know, I hopefully get some resolution to this quickly. Anne?
Yeah, the letter that you sent there, I know it seems probably ages ago, a lot of things have happened since, since April 7th, but we did provide and ask that my layperson uh, that the city be given the contact information for an architect or engineer of their choosing of all the plans, so that city staff can start the plan reprocess. So maybe we just start there, see if we can get something, a selection made, and keep the fire, maybe the fire system going with your folks for the sprinkler system. But we have a tight deadline, too, and I've seen the royalty here for the city of Sedalia, it's just clearly evident, we're gonna wanna see a plan before June 1st comes, comes around.
And you say, like, you talked about the architect's new prints, that...
All that, all that starts in February, what the, the state of Missouri says, needs to, and what our sprinkler, and what I'm still saying.
That's part of, that's, the architectural plan is part of all that.
We can't just add that into a built, a pretty busy building without knowing the other aspects of the engineering and the building codes that need to be met, that's why we set forth this. So I'm glad we cleared it back.
Clearly, so by June 1st, and then by May 15th?
We, we actually wanted by May 15th, so that city staff would be able to have a couple weeks to review, get them back out, back out if there was some issue or not. Our problem is the deadline, none of the renewal of our business license comes due on June 1st, and that's why we wanted to have that commitment and that plan in place, that there, that's going to be so.
Well, my, I mean, we've contacted the architect for this late 15th to have actual plans, I don't know if that's feasible or not, that's, I say, we, we will have, if you give me a deadline, you might say, you have to notify us you got that fire.
When did they start with the plans, making plans? When did they start making plans? We've had a lot of time expire since the fire, and now we're, you know, we're getting down, and, and this license is here, and now, you know, we got this delay, and that, they go after, we get the rehabilitation done. When, when did they start that?
Well, they're gonna start it now, because again, that's not clear to them, to me, anyway, exactly, or when it's to be.
So, may I ask you another question?
Were you not in receipt of the state letter?
Yes, the state letter, yes.
So, are, are they currently insured, and, and, insured up through issuing of the permit?
Their policy is not, provisioned policy for now, installed now has a monitoring requirement, but certainly the policy's still in force, so, for, for example, there's a liability plan, or something for her, or whatever, the policy is enforcing that, on that thing.
Yeah, so, so any more questions? Everybody?
Nope.
Anything else you want to add?
Uh...
I'm sorry?
No, not for, just so for my notes, so, the deadline May 15th for actual planning?
Well, that's not what the letter said.
Right.
So, um, if, if we have a close board to discuss, if it's not resolved, that, I don't want to, we'll, we'll...
For the immediate action, can it be done within a week, if you could give the fire department to have those answers?
Um, which question, sir?
Well, for one, the evacuation plan, whatever they need, while we haven't got this other side, like the keys, the evacuation plan, the names, all that kind of stuff, can that be accomplished with them within a week?
This was part of the March 4th, the discussion about the evacuation plan. Um, and I think the addition of making sure that there is a master procedure, that that is part of that, is, um, the action for the, Shaw, I don't know.
I don't think that's...
Councilwoman Nash. Okay. Monica Nash wants to make a comment, or have a question, Monica? Did you hear everybody? You have, you have, you have a mute dial?
Councilwoman Nash, did you have a conver, or a comment that you wanted?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought I heard you a minute ago. Okay.
No.
We'll close this hearing, so we need a motion of the council to close this meeting?
So...
Call there?
All right.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for that.
It's all, it's on the agenda, so, do we need a, do we need a motion to adjourn to close session?
Ball, make the motion.
Close the hearing, but I didn't know if you... I don't know which is which, so...
Ball member, lot of issues, both.
We did that already. Close the hearing, but I didn't know if you... I don't know which to quit, so. Okay, for the council members that are remotely, you should have gotten a link for a closed door link, so if you re-log in to that...
They're not here.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, Kelvin, I couldn't get in that way, I'm on the phone.
Yeah, there, uh, there will be a different meeting ID for the closed door. Did we put that on?
Okay.
No, we wouldn't have put that on. So did you get a different meeting ID number for the closed door?
I'm waiting for it to come back up.
Cleaned it myself, actually. It shouldn't be on that, it should be...
It should be different, shouldn't it be?
Yes, it should be. Shouldn't be on there, because Kelvin...
Yeah, we need to kill that connection.
Well...
Kelvin, would you call me and tell me what the contact information is? I do not have it.
Okay, and, as well as Ms. Nash, right?
I have, I have nothing, and I'm only on the phone.
Okay. All right, we'll kill this, and then we'll call, uh, the councilman, and, okay, we'll call you in a minute. Thanks.
Okay, so what do we do? Hang up?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call you with a, a new meeting ID number.
Okay.